Okay, I waited till everybody got real loud to start our meeting, I apologize. We're about two minutes late and that's one of my primary responsibilities to make sure we start on time, so I've failed already. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. We do have a quorum of our board team. I got a call about an hour ago from Dr. Kingman, who's a fabulous urologist here in town, if y'all don't know what his career is, and he had an emergency surgery, so he's most likely not going to be here this evening, but we have the rest of our board team here. So if Taylor stumbles in, you'll know that he belongs here. But we appreciate everybody else being here. That's item one on our agenda. Item two is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Trevor Hansen, who's the student pastor at College Hills Baptist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation this evening. Thanks, Trevor.
You're welcome. All right, let's pray together. Father, we thank you for this day to serve and worship you. I pray that you bless this meeting. We know that you have a desire to see the children of SAISD educated about your world and for them to develop their minds and glorify you. And so we pray for the teachers, the coaches, the administrators, support staff, the board members, and everyone involved with the school district, that they would have that as their goal as well. God, we also know that no one can truly serve you without being humbled by a personal knowledge of sin and God's holiness, and turning to Jesus in repentance, and trusting Him for eternal life. Lord, we pray for the safety of our children, their parents, and all those involved with their education. We pray that you would guide this meeting, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Trevor. We appreciate you being here and thank you for the invocation. Our third item is our pledges, and we've got some incredible students from Austin Elementary School who are going to be coming forward. I talked to them a little bit before we got started, and they're in the second through the fifth grades, so y'all come on forward as I introduce them. So we have Abel Delaio, Madeline Flannery, Abel Hernandez, Jasmine Hernandez, and Tristan McGuire. So if y'all will stand and join them as they lead us in our pledges.
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
Okay, and I promised the students that if they had anybody with them that wanted to take their picture, that they could come forward and get a great picture. We got a really beautiful and handsome group here, so y'all take advantage.
You can say it out loud, "Smile."
Thanks, everybody for being here, and thanks, students. They said that they hadn't taken over the campus at Austin just yet, but they're working on it. So, thank y'all. We appreciate y'all being here. And they did a great job. I always tell everybody, "I'm not leading the pledges, y'all are," so they did a great job of getting that done. Let me read our script this evening before we get started. Good evening. Welcome, as the president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent, to the school district. I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular school board meeting. I also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of our meeting on public access channel, which is Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed in detail at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I'll make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. I have some further comments when we get to that item on our agenda, but I'll leave it at that right now. And then additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask that any audience members would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments should limit their comments to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record in order that our tape might adequately reflect the proceedings. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. And I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this particular time. Again, it's an incredible pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking the time to join us here. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district. That takes us to item four, which is recognitions. I know a lot of y'all are here for this evening, we appreciate y'all being here. Our first recognition, Ms. Crutchfield's going to take care of, and that's recognition of our fire prevention poster contest winner. So, Ms. Crutchfield, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Lehman, members of the board, and guests. Tonight, we have several recognitions. First, we will recognize our fire prevention poster winners. Not only are these elementary students talented artists, they also help their campus communicate important information about staying safe during a fire emergency. When I call your name, please come stand in front of the board facing the audience and your families. From third grade, our poster winners are Shengin Huang from Fort Concho Elementary, Lola Hogan from Santa Rita Elementary, Sloan Cole from Fort Concho Elementary, Jalen Nixon from Fannin Elementary, from fourth grade, Mary Catherine Darby from Santa Rita Elementary, Victoria Bajent from Lamar Elementary, McKenna Dane from Austin Elementary, Oliver Minch from Lamar Elementary, from fifth grade, Jordan Mundon from Santa Rita Elementary, Aiden Rascon from Lamar Elementary, Celeste Cole from Fort Concho Elementary, and Alina Luso from Reagan Elementary. Dr. Detloff, will you please join us at the front to take a picture? And we welcome, once we have our district picture, parents, please feel free to come forward and we'll take as many pictures as you like.
Come on up.
Start with...
Congratulations.
And moms and dads, if you will please allow us to keep the posters, we'll leave them on display for a while and we'll make sure we get them back to you. Okay? Thanks so much. Thank you, fire prevention poster winners. Nice job.
Our next recognition is item B on our, four B on our agenda, that's recognition of Central High School Cheerleaders, and Ms. Crutchfield's going to work through that as well.
So tonight, we are pleased to recognize a group of hard-working young people who represent San Angelo ISD with enthusiasm, energy, and precision. The Central High School Varsity Cheerleaders won the 2019 National Cheerleaders Association Championship earlier this year. Mr. Esqu, if you will please come forward and introduce your championship team.
Okay, so we have Boston Braden, Isis Camarillo, Jada Carter, Sidney Edgar, Kalen Edwards, Jill Gersh, Hannah Gomez, Delaney Grimes, Ally Hamby, Holly Harrington, Madison Jackson, Candice Leach, Courtney Love, Adara Robles, Emily Sanchez, Jayden Sawyer, Haley Smith, Hannah Steele, Rayleigh Torres, Carly Wallace, Haley Wardlaw.
So we're going to have y'all...
And hang on, Matt needs to introduce the person next to him as well.
I will do that as well. So I was going to ask everyone to please join me in congratulating and celebrating these young people and their coaches, Mr. Matt Esqu and Mrs. Amanda Chambers. Thank you for your dedication to Central High School and for your tireless pursuit of excellence. We would like for y'all to turn around and start shaking everybody's hands. Oh, never mind, pictures, pictures. Don't, no, no, wait, back up. Okay, so, Dr. Detloff, would you like to join for pictures? You have to be in the picture. You're the one that's, yeah, get in the picture. Dr. Detloff, will you join them for a picture, please? Dr. Detloff's coming to get in the picture. He's coming, Charlene, he's coming too. So I will say, their pursuit of excellence involves practice tonight, and Mr. Esqu was like, "You need to make this fast because we have practice."
It's got to be hot in those jackets, too, so we appreciate y'all. Thank y'all for being here. Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if everybody in the audience, mostly parents probably know this, but, you know, forever cheerleading wasn't a UIL sport, you know, it was just kind of a club, and now it's all governed by UIL, and they've got some very specific rules, and to win a competition on a national basis or even a statewide basis is incredibly difficult. So we appreciate the efforts of not only our coaches, but also all the young ladies that were involved in that. So our third recognition is for recognition for National Principals Month, and Ms. Crutchfield, I'll turn it over to you again.
Thank you. Dr. Detloff, will you help me, please? Okay, so, principal friends, what I'm going to do is call y'all up at one time, elementary first and then secondary, and you'll get your certificate, we'll do our photos and celebrate, and it'll be great. Okay? Thanks for being here tonight. Okay, here we go. October is National Principals Month. We are pleased to recognize our principals for their tireless dedication to our students and schools. The principal's role is crucial to the success of our schools. Principals are instructional leaders, cheerleaders, active listeners, coaches, friendly faces, reminders of what is right and wrong, and leaders of professional learning among a myriad of other duties as needed. On any given day, you may see a principal appraising teachers, playing a pickup game of four-square with third graders who need a little extra attention, meeting with concerned parents, planning a safety drill, unclogging a drain in the bathroom, organizing a community event, and that's just their morning. SAISD principals are district leaders who care deeply for our students, staff, families, and community. Please join me in recognizing our wonderful principals. Our elementary principals, from Alta Loma, Lori Herndon; from Austin Elementary, Brooke Columbach; from Bel Air Elementary, Lindsay Carr; from Bonham Elementary, Heidi Whereso Whiskey; from Bowie Elementary, Darius Flowers; from Bradford Elementary, Bertha Carrasco; from Crockett Elementary, Clayton Hubbard; from Fannin Elementary, Dave Danner; from Fort Concho Elementary, Lori Barton; from Glenmore Elementary, Terry Gould; from Goliad Elementary, Zach Ramirez; from Holloman Elementary, Ginger Luther; from Lamar Elementary, Sharon Lang; from McGill Elementary, John Ritter; from Reagan Elementary, Brandy Tyner; from San Jacinto Elementary, Kimberly Spurgers; and from Santa Rita Elementary, Kay Scott. We'll work it out.
Can I say a few words?
Please, thank you.
So, principals, it certainly is a privilege to be with you today, and for our audience members, I have told our principal group for the last 11 years that I've been in this school district, that you guys, the attributes that you have, really make me need to go back to the foundry and be recast, because the skillset and expertise of our principals is truly unbelievable and it's remarkable. And the measures that you conduct for kids in and out of the classroom, at your home, at the campus, is really remarkable. So it's just a privilege to work, serve, and be with you throughout the course of what we do and the work that we accomplish. So you continue to be a blessing to this school district and to our community, so thank you.
Yes? Yes? He's in every picture. Carver Learning Center, Paze Claudia Becerra; Glenn Middle School, Michael Columbach; Lee Middle School, Amy La Master; Lincoln Middle School, Joe Gondar; Central Freshman Campus, Ricky Black; Central High School, Bill Waters; and Lakeview High School, Jason Skelton.
The same principles apply for our principals. LE and AL. I just want to say again, the individuals standing before you this evening worked tirelessly to benefit our kids and our community. As a secondary principal, their clock never stops, and their sleep is interrupted on a consistent basis. The work that you guys do for our kids in this school district is to be commended. It's unbelievable, the amount of love, attention, coaching, mentoring that you provide, not only staff members, but all of our students, as we help them become really engaging citizens and be ready for that post-secondary environment. So we thank you for all your work, and again, you guys are a blessing to this community and our school district as well. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Just saying, just saying.
That concludes this evening's recognitions.
Thanks, Ms. Crutchfield, we appreciate that. Certainly recognizing our principals once a year is not near often enough for all the hard work that they do, and I know Dr. Detloff mentioned this, but I don't know of a single principal that doesn't, their workday's never the same, you know, it changes every day, and they have to be able to work and conduct business, no matter what happens each day. And that's a significant challenge, and we certainly appreciate all their efforts. I mentioned this earlier, that I'd make some further comments on this. There's been some changes that the state legislature made to audience participation in regards to board meetings, and historically, I feel like our board's been very transparent in how we dealt with public comment, and we want to continue to do that. But there's a couple of things that we're going to try to do, not only at this regular board meeting, but at our pre-agenda board meeting in the future, and that's require anyone that wishes to speak either on an agenda item that evening or on something that's not on our agenda that, this particular, that particular evening, is for them to sign up. And so the signup sheet would include their name, address, and a contact, whether that's a phone number or an email address, so we can reach out to them if we get further information that might be beneficial to them. And then if it's on a particular agenda item that evening, then they would need to refer to our agenda, much like this evening. As an example, we might have item nine, or maybe item 10, consider bills, accounts, and financial statements. If someone wanted to speak to that, they would put, on their signup sheet, they'd put Agenda Item 10, and then we would have an idea of what they wish to speak on. Obviously, on a non-agenda item, we would like to know the topic in advance, so if they want to talk about the PACE program and what we're doing to address students who are dropping out of school and how we've addressed the PACE program, and that's not on our agenda that evening, then they would need to give us an idea of that topic. So any person wishing to address the board, and we're going to have some leniency tonight because this is a new rule, so anybody wishing to do so tonight, then we're going to go by our old rules, but tonight, beyond tonight, any person wishing to address the board must be heard and must approach the podium and introduce themselves. The board will hear public comment before each agenda item if an individual has signed up to speak on that agenda item. And for any items not on the agenda, the board will hear public comment during the public comment portion of our meeting, which is where we are right now on item five. Each participant will be limited to five minutes. Previously, we suggested that we have a three-to-five-minute timeframe, but we've extended that to five minutes to make comments to the board, unless the board president and, or the designated board president, in case the board president's not here and someone else is running our meeting, they might need to adjust the time limit for all speakers if we have a large number of speakers who are wishing to just address a single item. So if we have 15 or 20 people sign up and they want to address the same item, then we, the board president would have the discretion to change the timeframe for anyone wishing to speak to the board that particular evening. And again, we, historically, I think we've been very transparent as a board, we want to continue to be that way as we move forward, but we've been a little bit lax on how we hand, how long we allowed some people to speak. Lots of times, people didn't go to the podium to speak, and then it didn't come out. People that are watching our broadcast on TV didn't get to hear what questions were or what their comments were, so we want to make sure that they go and introduce themselves, let us know where they live, and then beyond that, try to limit their comments to five minutes, and we'll be, you know, the last thing I want to do is interrupt someone and say, "You've taken too much time," but we'll work forward and try to work through this as, and correct some of our board policy that has dictated that the board conduct ourselves in a little bit different manner historically, but I think that'll help us have a better idea of what we're going to face each evening, and allow me to, as the board president, to make sure that we stay on task and do the things that we need to do as a board. So having said that, we'll move to item five, which is reserved for anyone wishing to make comments on items that are not on our agenda this evening. So anyone wishing to do that this evening, I would encourage you to come forward, introduce yourself from the... yourself from the microphone, and please try to limit your comments to five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want a clarification. Did you say we're to comment before the agenda item? Or that would... We may not... Nobody may have a comment until after the agenda item is brought up and in response to something that you say?
Correct. I think, yes, I did say that, and let me make a caveat to that, and that is if someone wishes to speak after we've had a discussion about that, and by the way, you didn't introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, Mary Casper.
But this is Ms. Casper. But if someone... Once again, we would... If they want to speak, at least currently, what we would ask them to do is we'd pass the sheet around. We'd have Becky pass the sheet around and have someone sign up. And then that way, we could... Once again, we want the name and contact information, so we can reference that for the future. But your question's a good question, and so we would... The board president would have some discretion moving forward as we... If someone wanted to get up after we had our discussion, yes. That's the current policy, and we would continue to do that as we move forward. So if we have a board discussion, we would prefer to get the comments out of the way. But if someone's just spurred to comment after we've had the discussion, then we're going to still allow that at this present time.
Because that's not the way the city council does it at all. You know, the city council is... It's discussion afterwards when they want... When people want a clarification of something. So that's where I'm coming from. If you make a statement and it doesn't make sense.
Right. And that's how we've handled that historically. In the past, we've always handled it where someone would be able to make comments after we... Right before we called for the vote. And again, as someone leading the meeting, we have to have an idea of who's going to get up and speak. And if it becomes a problem moving forward, then we'll have to address it as we outlined. If it doesn't become a problem, then I think we'll allow some discretion to the president and let him ask for comments prior to us taking the final vote.
Okay. That just doesn't seem to be very helpful for public information on some... You know, comment on some items.
Okay. And this is not on...
We can discuss this some other time.
Yeah. This is not on... This item's not on our agenda this evening, but certainly, this board's intent is to be transparent and make sure that we allow people from the public every opportunity to speak. At the same time, we want to make sure that our meetings can have... That we can stay on target and on task, and we don't get in the weeds, and we do things that are on our agenda. So that's the intent. And never will we have the intent not to take a public comment. That's something that our board feels strongly about.
Well, that's basically a half-empty class, in my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening? Okay, we'll move forward to the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes? We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve the minutes of our September 9, 2019 special finance and pre-agenda meeting and our September 16, 2019 regular board meeting. Do we have any comments or questions from our board team? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is Item 7. That's our student enrollment reports, Item 7A, for the sixth Monday of school. The district continues to have increased enrollment over what we had last year. I think this report indicates 53 students, more than we had last year. But then, the most recent report is around 80. But we've been running somewhere between 50 and 100 students, more than what we had at this particular timeframe last year. Item B, in our report section of our meeting this evening, is our first six weeks' average daily attendance report. Our average daily attendance is actually up over this same time last year, almost one and a half percentage point. So for those of you who don't know, who might have forgotten, the way we get paid by the state is based on how many students we have in the classroom and how often they attend. And so that's very important. So this year, we're up to 96.16% for the first six weeks as compared to 94.36% last year. So again, up almost one and a half percentage points. That's Item B. Item C is a public hearing on targeted improvement plans, and we've got presentations this evening from Mr. Wes Underwood and Ms. Shelley Huddleston, and we're going to turn it over to them. Who's going first? Wes, are you going first? Okay. Can y'all see that? Everybody see that? Perfect. President Lehman, Dr. Detloff, Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure tonight to talk a little bit about the work that our principals have been doing around effective schools work... Effective schools' framework and the targeted improvement plans that they have created. These are plans that were created for campuses that were identified in need of improvement and in need of extra support. And so our principals that were identified with that went to some training with myself and Ms. Huddleston on September the 4th and 5th at Region 15. And we did a little work around this effective schools' framework and identified some areas that the campuses thought that they could continue to move the work forward and improve student achievement and impact student achievement to a great extent. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that process and how we went about that this evening. The effective schools' framework is basically five identified essential actions that the TEA that has identified with school leaders across the state and looking at effective schools across the state and what they do and what they do well. And so these five areas are really centered around effective instruction as the core, and then the surrounding parts around that are effective and high... and supportive teachers, high-quality instruction, and a positive school culture. And then that is further supported on the outer part of that ring by strong school leadership and planning. And so on those days of the 4th and 5th of September, as we met with principals in Region 15, we kind of dove into the work of what that looks like for each one of those essential actions. So within the essential actions, we took a look at some high-priority levers and things that get more bang for your buck, so to speak, as you start to work on that work that helps to move school improvement forward. And those six actions that were identified by the TEA and the school leadership around the state were campus instructional leaders with clear roles and responsibilities, recruit, select, assignment, induction, retention of a full staff of highly qualified educators, creating a compelling vision, mission, values, and goals focused on a safe environment and high expectations, curriculum and assessments aligned to the teaks with a year-long scope and sequence. And then the fifth one, that instruction part, was really broken into two levers that we could pull. Objective daily-driven daily lesson plans with formative assessments and data-driven instruction. And so the principals really kind of went into those six levers to identify some key components that were part of those. And each one of these had about five or six key components, and principals really took a look at that. So the next part, what they did is, as we looked at our data and we looked at how they were performing, we went in and we did an effective schools' framework self-assessment. And so they went through these levers and really assessed, where are we? They looked at the key components of that. They looked at what the key practices were. They looked at the successful criterias. And then they evaluated, you know, are we doing this? Are we not doing this? We kind of doing it? Where do we fall on that continuum? And the first part of that is they really... They dove deep into that process, and they looked at the evidence, which they could provide, that said, yes, we are, no, we are not. So it was not just a, we're going to rate ourselves a five because we want to do this. They had to go deep, and they had to really think about, you know, where are we? And they provided that evidence on those plans about how they thought that they were doing, what evidence that they were... where they were, and then they rated themselves. We haven't started this work yet. That work was somewhat underway, or we've substantially completed that work. And so they went through that assessment and looked back at those five levers to rate those levers about where can we get the biggest bang for our buck. Capacity of the schools to take on all five levers at any one given time is not feasible. So what we looked at are one of the two to three levers that each school could... that each school could pull to really get to where we wanted to be. So from the results of that effective school framework and the identification of these six essential actions, right back here that they... that we identified, principals identified which ones were going to help them out the most. And they in turn turned those into their targeted improvement plans, and those are the plans that you have before you tonight. So those plans are the work of going through this self-assessment, identifying what levers we could really move ourselves forward with, and create the targeted improvement plans that are going to make the impact for the year to come. And so that's the work that they have identified at this point. The targeted improvement plans that you have before you reflect that work, and they are also posted online at our curriculum instruction webpage. So if you want to go see that, go see those targeted improvement plans. We do have those housed there as well. I'm going to turn it over to Shelley Huddleston real quick, and she's going to talk about some of those essential actions that the campuses have taken on and how we've inducted that into our targeted improvement plans, and more importantly, how they already align with the work that we're doing in curriculum instruction with Janice's team, and how all that kind of comes together and really points us and aligns all of our arrows in the right direction. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Huddleston.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. So as Wes was alluding to, we worked through... Each of the campuses worked through all these levers, and as it turned out, almost all of our campuses, they came up with the same three levers that they overall want to focus on. And that is the idea of the compelling mission, vision, values, and goals, focusing on a safe environment, high expectations, working through objective-driven lesson plans with formative assessment and data-driven instruction. And as Wes has already alluded to, the thing that was great about this whole process is that, once we identified these levers, there was nothing we had to create or come up with to say, okay, here's a way we can do this, because we've already been addressing all of these things, so the actions that we're doing. So more than anything, it gave us just more proof that we are on the right track with each one of these things that we're doing. So I want to just give you a little additional information of the things that we talked about, and that is when we... For the campuses who chose the idea of compelling mission, vision, value, and goals, here are the things that we already have in place, or things that we have been working to have in place to really impact this lever. Obviously, our work with Capturing Kids' Hearts is foremost in this idea of creating an environment where it's safe, kids want to be there, and there's high expectations set. Also, we did some training with Region 15 on campus routines and procedures, where we took the things that we already do in terms of morning routines, lunch routines, and just solidified those a little more, put them in a lesson plan format, so that anyone new coming in could see, okay, this is exactly how we greet kids in the morning. This is the safety procedures that we go through. This is how we do lunch. This is how we do after-school. So just kind of putting a tighter framework around the things that we were already doing with routines and procedures. We've been working with positive behavior intervention support and our work with Lindy Lyles, hiring her, just looking at social, emotional learning in general. Encouragement this year and in the past of student voice. All of our campuses, middle school campuses, have had student kivas, where they brought students in from all different walks of the campus to inform the things that the campuses are doing, campus leadership roles. I was just at Goliath this morning and meeting with some of their student leaders, and the way that those students are speaking into what they think their school should be, and then our focus on the learner profile. Also, beginning this morning, we have opened up the Panorama Survey that we're doing with all our campuses district-wide, which is just giving us a really great snapshot of how students, staff, and parents feel about the social, emotional learning that's going on within our campuses. And with that, I'm going to break from this for just a minute, because we want to show you a video when we're talking about what we're doing with setting high expectations and having the right kind of environment. We just want to show you a brief video from Bradford Elementary doing Capturing Kids' Hearts.
Welcome to our school. My name is Bertha Crossco, and I'm the principal of Bradford Elementary, where our passion is kids. I wanted to showcase our hopes and dreams. One of the ways that we begin each school year is by having each parent let us know what their hopes and dreams are for their child. And the students are just excited to see what that parent has to say, because they might have not known that. This teacher, she put hers out here, and she also has affirmation buckets with them. So each student can go and just give a quick little affirmation, just to know that everybody's important at our school. We also do goal-setting. So our goal-setting also has to do with our hopes and dreams letters from our parents, and we always work hard to make sure our students are reaching their goals, but also we know what their goals are and what their parent goals are for them. So here at Bradford Elementary, we are a national Capturing Kids' Hearts showcase school. And so what that means is that we have just jumped in, and we are all about building relationships with our students, with our staff, with our parents, and our school community. We start with a social contract. So a social contract is, we also tell students, it's not rules. This is how we're going to treat each other. So we start building it with our staff. So anything that we implement with our teachers, we also model as our team here. So our teachers came up with this. We asked some guiding questions. How do you want to be treated by me? How do you want to be treated by others? How do you want to be treated when there's conflict? So with those questions, they came up with these important words, and we hold tight to them. Being honest with each other and professional transparency is important to our staff. You'll see respected has a bunch of checks, so that's very important to our staff. All this signatures is we are making that promise to hold tight to the social contract and to respect and honor each other. Whenever we have visitors come to our campus, even as adults, I will ask, can you please come sign our social contract? Another part of it is the Excel model. And with the Excel model, we're huge on handshakes. So if you come visit Bradford Elementary, somebody's going to grab your hand right away. And we share good things. So we always start our staff meetings and even our morning show with good things. We also, what are we going to communicate? Teachers use this small in their classroom. What content are they going to communicate to their students? And empower... How are we going to empower our teachers? How are we going to empower our students? How are we going to empower each other? And launch? We always launch with something positive. So good things in the morning, it's the best way to start off, and then at the end of the day, everybody has their own launch. When we have faculty meetings, they have their own launch, and they bring them up or I bring them in. So it's just, anybody can share the launch and lead the launch. You'll also see in our classrooms that we also have a greeter and a firmer, a raider, and a timekeeper. So with our greeter, that's the person that's going to welcome you into our campus, the person that's going to welcome you into the classroom. The firmer's job is just to find all the great things happening throughout the day and throughout that period, and really highlight the positive in the classroom environment. The raider's job is raider behavior. How are we doing on the social contract? Are we doing awesome? Or hmm, we could work on a few things? Or we really need to have a group discussion and hold tight to maybe being active listeners or showing our best effort? And our students are awesome raiders. They can tell you exactly what the class was doing or what exactly they need to focus on for next time. Our first step in introducing community-based accountability to our staff is going over our moral imperative. What is our specific role in it? So we wrote down, we talked about community-based accountability, and we went into depth and just making sure that we are reaching the whole child. And everybody wrote down the responses and what the promises or our goals for our students are, and how we're going to empower ourselves and challenge ourselves to make sure that we're working towards that. Last year, we were affected by a tornado that thankfully did not hit our school, but hit our whole neighborhood right around us. Going through that tornado experience with our parents and our families and our kids just really brought back to, it's a whole community. Our community was here. They came in, they fed everybody, they donated, they called what you need. It was just an outpour, and it was awesome to see all of them come and help and really rebuild and clean up and just support our families. And they really appreciated that. And this year, just moving forward, it just really brings it back to how our school is so important to our community and how we're there for them. It's awesome to see how our kids are growing academically, but they're leaders, and ultimately, that's what... that's what we want for our students. We want them to lead, and we want them to be empowered, and our parents as well. I've had them reach out and say, can, can I help with this? Can I help with that? And I'm like, they're asking, they're ready. We have built that culture and that safe environment for them. It's not just about what we're doing in the school, it's about what our whole community is about, and everybody has ownership, and everybody can be part of it and help us empower our students, because ultimately, that's what we want. We want the best future for them. So I'm proud to be at Bradford Elementary and excited for our future here, and I can't wait to see what the end of the year looks like for us.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Karasco, for sharing that video with us, and thank you to Jack for making that. That was great. And what we're trying to show you with this and say in this is that what we know from research is that part of this effective schools framework is that effective schools are schools where children want to be there and want to learn, and we've created a safe environment. And so that work with capturing kids' hearts has really fed directly into that lever. And so now, we're going to finish pulling, yeah, there we go. All right. The second lever that we, that was chosen through doing this effective schools framework survey with principals was this idea of objective-driven daily lesson plans with formative assessments. Our teachers work very hard to plan high-quality lessons, but we know this is always an area where we can grow and improve. We've been doing much of that work through our work with PLCs, professional learning communities. We've sent many of our schools to training through Solution Tree Training, also through the work that our elementary and secondary directors of CNI have done with them in creating frameworks for PLCs. Not only do we have PLCs for teachers and instructional coaches, we have principal PLCs as well. I got to meet with my four awesome PLC principals today over at Crockett, and just a time to learn from each other and to look at the ways that other schools are doing things, such as tracking data and working on lesson plans. We've created common lesson planning periods for teachers, and that's at our middle schools and elementary schools. We have our continued coaching with Scholastic and Math Solution, who we're coaching into and speaking directly into the way that they form daily lesson plans and the way that they assess kids, and then also just the support that we've had from our CNI team and our content facilitators. I put in a couple of pictures there of our CNI team doing a training on formative assessment with our teachers, and then some time with an administrative team doing administrative PLC. And finally, our emphasis on data-driven instruction, that there are many different ways that we collect data. We can be inundated with data, but what do we do with it? And so we've been working to do, again, some training with how do we take formative assessment data and make instructional decisions for that. We've given very careful consideration this year to how we track student data, and I just, again, a couple of snapshots from some campuses of ways that they're tracking data on their campus, looking very carefully, student by student. Every sticky note represents a student and where they are and the direction in which they're headed, and you can find that on all of our campuses. And then also, students are tracking their own data, which we know to be highly effective. And we've been working, again, with our partnership with Region 15 on some additional training and data-driven instruction. So with all of that, we just want to say that those targeted improvement plans that we have made public to you and made available to our public are things that we're already doing, putting in place, but that we've solidified into these plans to submit to the state. We have gotten excellent feedback about all of the plans and know we are on the right track. So at this time, do you guys have any questions?
Anyone? Thanks to each of y'all. We appreciate that, and know that we're working hard in this area, and we appreciate all y'all's hard work. Okay, that concludes, I don't think we have anything this evening about our partnership with Goodfellow. That's item 7D, so I'll move to 8. Before we, I ask for approval of our consent items, I'm going to pull item H. That allows Mr. Dindell to recuse himself from item H, but I want him to be able to vote on items A through I. So excluding H, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent items.
Move to approve consent items, A through I, excluding H.
Thanks, Mr. Park. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our consent items, A through I, with the exclusion of H. Item A is to consider donations. Those are posted on our overhead. We appreciate the support of folks in our community. Item B is consider quarterly investment report, ending August 31st to 2019. Interestingly enough, our interest rates, because of interest rate increases last year, our interest earnings and percent of earnings increased in the, in the third quarter to around 2.25%, which is, if you look at our annual portfolio, it only was about 1.75%. So we're performing, from an interest standpoint, about five tenths of a percent more than what we did for the rest of the year. Item C is our annual portfolio report. Item D is to consider CDA local investment policy. That's how we invest our funds, and a lot of that is dictated by both local policy and state policies. Item E is to consider 2019-2020 authorized list of investment brokers or dealers. I think we have one additional investment broker or dealer than what we've previously approved. All the rest have been previously approved. Item F is to consider 2019-2020 authorized list of investment training providers. Item G is to consider bids for the child nutrition department for 2019-2020. This is for both paper and chemical products. And item I is to consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 2019-2020. I think we had one in our board book and an additional one at our places this evening. So do we have any questions or comments concerning items A through I, excluding H? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. And then I'm going to have Bill recuse himself to, as we consider bid number 19-016 for maintenance, transportation, and miscellaneous supplies. Bill's company is one of the providers for those services. And so there's rules that apply to how he should recuse himself. Technically, he's not required to, because it has to be a certain portion of his company's net proceeds in order to be required to recuse himself, but our board's always been real sensitive to how we handle that, so that's why he's recused himself. So I'll call for an approval of consider bid number 19-016 for maintenance, transportation, and miscellaneous supplies.
I move that we approve this item, and just want to make a comment that there's 137 providers there. So even though Mr. Dindell has recused himself, it's not like he's one of two or three. There's 137 different providers.
Thanks, Mr. Park. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Dr. Kingman. So we have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Dr. Kingman to consider bid number 19-016. Do we have any further board comment or questions?
Just a second, there's 137, 17 more additions.
Yeah, 17 additional vendors this year. Thanks, Gerard, good comment. Any further comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. And Becky, please make sure that reflects a 6-0 vote, and we'll go ask Gerard to recapture Our next item is to consider energy savings contract with Synergistics. Dr. Bright's going to address that for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. First off, I apologize for not being here pre-agenda. Had a long-time commitment that I needed to take care of and couldn't be here, but understand you had a pretty robust and good presentation by Mr. Creek and Dr. Hoff from From all indications, I got, had a lot of questions and answered most of them, but I also understand that maybe you had some further questions after the meeting that came to you that you would like to address. And I tried to address some of those in a packet that I placed at each of your spots. And there's a cover letter that I'd like for you to make sure you take a look at from Mr. Creek, and he worked really hard on this, because he texted me at 9:30 on Saturday night and said, hey, do you have time to look at this? I'm going to email you this cover letter. I said, yeah, that's fine, but can I at least watch the Longhorns finish beating Kansas? So anyway, he put a lot of time and effort into this and a lot of thought, so I hope you'll take time to look at that if you get a chance. Also, have a little bit of information included in the packet that, just want to walk you through, so you can see where we've been. And this is about the fourth page in, and so three green boxes right after the Synergistic cover. Just want you to know that we didn't start this last week. We've actually been talking to Synergistic about this renewal option since last January, because we knew November was going to come here, and we started talking. And you can kind of see how the negotiations progressed over time. We weren't very pleased at all with that first proposal, so we just told them, thank you, go away. And then they came back in June with another one. Bill was not satisfied with what was being offered. And so we were just about ready to say, thanks, we've enjoyed the partnership. When this last renewal extension offer came through, it was actually before October 15th. It's probably a week or two before that, but Mr. Creek and I had several phone conversations. Once their, I guess their big boss stepped in, Dr. Hoff, he kind of took over the negotiation and started really fine-tuning the proposal. And you see what they have offered, and made a number of concessions for us that we were asking for. The first one was, we certainly were not satisfied with the original pricing. And then the term, we wanted the term of the extension to coordinate or coincide with our budget, so that this contract would end like the end of August instead of middle of budget year. So, you know, when we get, if we do this and we get to the end of this 33-month term, we'll have budgeted information of what we need to do next. They also offered a performance guarantee, and I hope Dr. Hoff spoke to you a little bit about that. I know, Mr. Lehman, you weren't here either. So it's kind of interesting. It's, it's not, it's, they have a little risk in this, because it is a flat performance guarantee. If they go over it, it's about a 1% penalty per one KBTU. So, you know, if they go over at 41, it would be about a $22,000 penalty to Synergistic. But also, there's an incentive on the other end, if they get below 30, which is doable, but it's very tough in the school district environment, then that would be a bonus toward them of 1%. So, you know, I think it would be tough for them to hit, but certainly it gives them a target to go after. If you look on the next page, it's this white page with the three boxes, there's just a little more information there about what would happen with a Synergistic contract extension versus us doing it in-house. I'm going to let you take a look at that and digest some of the information real quick. We'll talk a little bit more about each one of these Synergistic bullet points here in just a little bit, what the natural transition is and what, you know, the piece it seems to be missing, and Mr. Creek mentioned this in his letter, that there's a support structure behind the two energy specialists that really have a benefit to the district. We'll talk about that here in just a second. We looked at some potential cost if we brought it in-house. We believe it will take three personnel units because of that support structure that's behind the two energy specialists. You see some potential costs there. We tried to be conservative, you know, we didn't try to inflate any numbers, but I think that's in the ballpark. The potential increase in usage is something we haven't really discussed. History has shown, there's case studies out there, that most districts that go away from Synergistic tend to go back to their old usage habits in about three years. I gave you a Rockwall ISD example. They've broken all records. It only took them one year to go back to their old levels. But they left Synergistic and went on their own and back to their old levels in one year. So I thought that was kind of interesting. Also gave you the past 24 months of our cost, so you can kind of get a feel for, you know, how that compares to a, to a flat fee rate. And that was based on the 50-50 split on cost avoidance. The other thing that we talked about, that performance guarantee, the little bit of the risk that Synergistic has is they're not going to do any adjustments for weather or any, anything. I mean, it's just, here's, here's the price, you know, we're going to shoot for that 30 to 40 range, we will not do any adjustments. Now, that's, that's tough on them, because we have a very cold winter. Our usage is just going to go up, and they're just going to have to eat it, if they go above the 40. But there's a, there's a plus side to them as well, because we know we're doing some LED projects that are going to help on the electrical side, so there's a little wiggle room in there. They have a little cushion on either side, but we think it's a fair proposal at this point. And we're trying to keep it simple. I mean, it could get complicated in a hurry if you start going into, using the software to calculate cost avoidance type issues that we do now. And I'm not sure I always trust those software packages as well. David and I have questions about how that all works. The next page, you say, well, what do these energy specialists do? They just sit behind a computer and monitor data? No. You'll see that there are a number of duties that these energy specialists perform, and I'll let David speak to them more if he wants to after a while, but he saves, or these guys save us a lot of time and work by doing things on the front end. And you can see a number of the items that they do for us. Okay, we'll go to the next page, which is the Synergistic support structure. These are some of the things that are behind the scenes that people don't necessarily see. Actually, the Synergistic people are really excited about this GreenX software. Me, I don't know, it's, it's just a tool that they use, but supposedly it's going to give them upfront alerts on possible problems that go on. And I know Mr. Van Hooser's here, he might can explain GreenX better, but they're very excited about it at the Synergistic end. I'm not 100% sure everything it does. But you see that the number of items that they, they have behind the scenes, that remote and onsite engineering and energy expert, expertise is very good, because they can pick up indications that we're having problems in areas that we may not be aware of. And I think there is some Energy Star certification that has some value to the district, that we may or may not be able to handle if we pull this on our own. Okay, so they have that support structure. And we talked a little bit about Rockwall. Also provided at the back two pages, an article from Abilene Christian University, and they recently renewed with Synergistic. And the 50-50 cost avoidance, cost sharing, savings, those contracts are going away. Everyone that they're doing now on renewals are flat-rate fees. We're not going to be able to pull back a 50-50 split anymore. So this is where they have been going. You know, as far as pricing goes, Synergistic will never share this, but, you know, we have some networks out there that will, will get some ideas of what's going on. We don't, and what we do know about ACUs, they have one energy specialist for their whole campus, and their pricing is somewhere in our range. Okay? And it may even start with a three, but it's somewhere close to what we're getting for two specialists. And that's another thing, you know, we talked about all along, was if we really wanted to reduce the cost, we could reduce energy specialists. But we felt like part of the success of the program was that we had the two boots on the ground that did all the work. And so we really pushed Synergistic to keep two in all of our proposals that they provided. And could we do it with one? Possibly. I just don't think it would be as effective. That's my opinion, maybe Mr. Creek's as well. So, you know, I want you to chew on some of this. Mr. Creek, you won't come up and say anything at this point? And then if y'all have some more questions, just throw them out there, and we'll talk.
Well, sorry, well, Mr. Creek's coming up. The only thing I was looking at is the contract in our board book. The thing, the way I read it, is if we wanted out of it, it costs us 14 months.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. Anytime in that 33-month window, if we want out, it's gonna cost us. So we're kind of, we're committed. I mean, if we go 33 months, we're gonna stick with it because we don't want to, we don't want that penalty.
Good evening. We spoke last Monday. And I tried to compose this with my true feelings, how I felt about the contract before or after. It says it in the letter. And when you look at the comparisons, numbers, you know, Jeff said were conservative, but they are very close. And I think when we first started visiting about this, if they would ask for a show on the hands to get out of it, I would have raised two hands. But when the counter came back, it was very close to what I felt like we could do, but with three people. I don't think it does us any good to try and think we can do it with one. We can't do it with two because we still have to analyze our data. We can't sit out there and just go wing it and do comfort control, scheduling, and not analyze what we're doing as a district and reinforce, good or bad or ugly, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong? That's why I believe it takes three. If that's gonna bring it in-house, that's what I would do. The numbers are very close, and I do recommend that at least you consider contracting it back out.
Thanks, Mr. Creek. Any questions from our board team, additional information you might need? I hadn't, you know, read everything in that. I think I read the contract pretty completely, but I didn't notice anything in there about any commitment from Synergistics in the, from a contract standpoint about us being hired, us being able to hire their employees after a two-year period? I didn't see that in the contract.
I believe it is actually in there because we talked to Dr. Hoff about it. So I'll dig back through there and make sure, but we believe it's in there.
Okay.
And that was a, you know, that's a deal about, when we talk about a smooth transition out of the 33-month period on that one slide, a natural transition, at least the wording we used. If we went to a Synergistic contract, currently, we cannot hire their, any of their past employees like Steve or Robert.
For two years.
For two years.
Correct.
Okay. They made a concession, said, "Okay, we'll pull that." And whenever you come out of this 33-month contract, you can have the two energy specialists that are on board. It may or may not be the same two.
Correct.
But you would get a, we would get a trained specialist, whoever it is, if we wanted to keep them. So you know, that's a plus as well.
So moving forward from a technology standpoint, is there software proprietary? How do we handle that long-term? You know, if, whether we have the specialist or not, we would still assume, and we assume that without their energy specialist, we would have to have IT support. We'd have to create our own program. Might have to go for a request for an RFQ, for someone to provide those services. How do we see us moving forward beyond the 33 months that we're talking about?
We would still use the Energy Cap program that Synergistic's used. It's not proprietary. The only thing that does remain with Synergistic is the historical data.
Okay.
We won't have access to that, but that's not critical. You can move forward and build your own historical data based on what you're performing yourself at. But as far as the Energy Cap, it is not, it is not licensed to Synergistic. It is available to us, and we do actually lease that now.
Okay. So moving forward, essentially, we'd have, let's assume that we don't have Synergistics after 33 months. We could have, choose to or not to hire two employees that currently work for them. And then we would have to have, as you mentioned earlier, possibly a third person to analyze data and things like that. And, but that system's not proprietary.
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other question? The other thing, I guess one other question before I let loose of my position has to do with the contract. Has our attorney reviewed the contract? Do they feel good about the contract? You know, there's people that have, we have school attorneys for a reason.
Talking to Mason, he has not sent it to the attorney.
Okay. All right. I mean, I think we need to do that and make sure that, it seems a little bit egregious some, at least from my standpoint, that, you know, if we get out of the contract, that essentially, it's not 12 months. It's really 12 months plus 60 days. So it's 14 months of payments that you're obligated to. So that seems a little bit one-sided in my opinion. So my opinion's not, I'm not used to reading all kinds of types of contracts. So I'd feel really comfortable if our attorney, our school attorney reviewed it to make sure that it was a favorable contract for both parties. And that's all I have. Other questions?
Well, just following up to Lanny, if we, this, our present contract ends in November 30th. And if we don't renew at that time, besides losing the two, Mr. Van Hoosier and our other analyst, is all the software stay? Is that what you're saying?
Software stays. No historical data. The software stays. But then you're gonna run into a scheduling, training, being able to schedule, comfort control issues, staffing.
And no one knows how to do that?
No, sir. It's all...
And did Synergistic tell us this a year ago, two years ago? "Hey, when we leave, guys, if y'all don't want us to rehire us, you better start training your own people." Have we been, have we been thinking about that at all?
No, sir.
And to train our own people, or, the persons that you were talking about in your letter that we might have to train, are these persons need to be college graduates or have any particular training to learn how to do this?
One of them, we did, we looked at different scenarios. One of them is a degreed position. The other one was a manual trades position. We looked at both the scenarios, both of them being degreed, one of them being degreed, the other one just manual trades. But they would actually be scheduled. And Steve, you might want to help me on this. The scheduling piece comes from Intertel, correct, on the, on the training? So that's where the piece comes from, where you get trained. And the scheduling piece of it would become from the Intertel group.
We would hire someone that works for Intertel or have someone from Intertel train somebody?
Yes, sir. It would be the training that comes from them.
And do we have any idea how long it takes to do that training? Do we have any other schools other than Rockwell, Rockwall?
Rockwall.
That we know that have gotten, that have stopped with Synergistics to know what their experience was?
Midland, Midland is one.
Do we, how long have they been out?
Not sure. No. About a year.
And do we know how they're doing?
No, sir. But the, as far as getting ready to hire new people, we, we've been working on job descriptions for a couple of months. So it wasn't like we just came in today and say, "Oh, my gosh, we gotta think about hiring." We've been thinking about this for a while, but, and we're really, we were very close to posting the positions until this renewal offer came through. And David's like, "Well, I need to look at this a little closer because it's really getting close to what I thought it might cost." We start with the hiring process.
Well, if, if we're not voting tonight, which I'm not ready to vote, I'll tell you that right now. But if, if we're waiting another month, I would like to have, find out as many districts as we can that have stopped this to see what their experience has been and how they've handled it. I'm not totally understanding if we're hiring Synergistics to do the best they can, why we say, "We'll give you a bonus if you do better than when it should be." Why aren't they, if they just get below 30, they've done, they're doing kind of the Tom Landry approach, you know? He never did really compliment players for doing what he said, "I'm already paying you to do that." So if that's what we're paying them to do, I'm not sure why we have to, would give them a bonus because they, we didn't, we didn't set this and say, "You're supposed to hit this point. If you do better, we pay you better." But if that's what you're saying, the contract is going to say, then I guess that would be it. But I think we're hiring them to do the best they can. And while I'm on that, how are we going to know if it does go below 35, that that's because of their efforts versus all the, ever campus we're putting in LED lights? How do we know how much that's gonna drop it anyway? We don't have any historical data on that.
That is true. We do know from E3, which will be here this, next month with our proposal, that the savings on the lighting piece will be a certain percentage. We already know that's coming. So I think that's why there's a risk on each side. There's some risk on our side because we know we're gonna get some energy savings. There's a risk on their side because they don't know what the weather's gonna do. And we felt like the incentive piece was, you know, the little carrot. Hey, we know where we're at. We know that 30 is a very hard number to reach for school districts. So let's see how close you can get to that 30. And if they beat the 30, that's, look at all the savings we're gonna get. So we felt like it was kind of a fair deal to give them some incentive on their side as well as a penalty on the upside. The only reason we put that in there. I get where you're coming from. I mean, the incentive is, or you sit there and you're looking at saying, we talked about there's low-hanging fruits probably done. And so we're asking them to try to maintain where we're at, which we know come in off of Synergistic, the case studies and the historical data that we get from other school districts.
Well, you've got one district that you quoted, and if you've got the data, I haven't seen the data. I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, I'm a little upset, and I told you that this week. This is all, I'm not good at making decisions on the last minute. And all this has come in, in the last seven days. You weren't here Monday. Mr. Creek was here Monday, but we didn't get a talk from Mr. Creek. So I'm just saying that this is difficult to make a very important decision, and we're just now getting some information.
I understand.
And that's why I would like to have more information, but not just say, "The data says this," if we don't have any data. And other districts are having this. If they are, just tell me what other districts and what their experience is so that if I'm making a decision, I'm going to be asked about my decision. I can at least say I'm basing it on information that I've received, not just information that I've heard.
Right. And we're not pushing you to make a decision now. We're okay with us digesting this and giving us a little more time. Just know that when it comes November, we're gonna have to go one way or the other. And if you're not comfortable with it, we'll just pull it off the whole agenda and say, "Thank you, Synergistic," and not even worry about a vote if that's okay with y'all.
Well, and I understand it's not just us. They just came in at the last minute.
Right.
When we told them before that it, we weren't interested in that. But it's, it's now six weeks or so from their, when their, the contract's over. And I'm just, it's a little pressured that we're having to make a decision this quick on...
Big decision. You know, we feel the pressure as well because if we decide to go with this, it's, we're committed 33 months. So we fully understand that and fully respect it.
So probably some help with making sure that we're, how other districts are following, whether they walked away or whether they continued with Synergistics, if what type of continued success they had with Synergistics. I think that's what Mr. Parker's asking for. Any other?
Yes. We'll take care of that in the morning.
Our school attorney. Any other things that, any other board member, Dr. Kingman?
The only, I know that Synergistic uses this compiled BTU number that is kind of a, I get it, but...
Sort of an interesting calculation.
Yeah, I get it, but I don't know how to, I don't really understand what the savings at 30, if they got to 30 BTU, what that would save the district versus where we're at at 35. I mean, because it doesn't translate in anything that I can calculate on a spreadsheet. You know what I mean? Like, so like, what is that number that we would actually be saving when we're looking at a percentage to pay them?
I can figure that out.
And also, can you give us, I mean, I would be disappointed if our, with all the LED lights we put in, and one of the prime reasons for that was to lower utilities, that, that it wouldn't go down some when we put in all these LEDs. So I just question, what did our LED people say as to what they thought our energy was going to go down?
And they gave us that number, but I don't remember it, so I'm not gonna throw one out on the table. But they gave us one, and we have it.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be good information to have, Dr. Bright. And again, it's a big, I know y'all spent some time on it. I don't want our discussion tonight to indicate that that's not the case. We know that y'all vetted it. We know that y'all have negotiated what you feel like's a favorable contract. You know, we just need to bring everybody else along. And if we're able to do that, then each individual board member will be able to make a decision. Other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we postpone this vote until time specific, which would be our November meeting. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Lehman, a second from Mr. Dendel, to postpone our decision on this item number until time specific, which would be our November regular board meeting. That allows us to meet contract, our current contract extends through the month of November. Yeah, Dr. Della.
Mr. Lehman, I just want to have a quick recap. These are the three key areas that our board needs information on. The legal review, the LED light savings estimation that we have previously, but we need to get our hands on that again. And then basically the BTU cost difference. For example, out of Lehman's terms, what's the difference between 30 BTUs and 32 BTUs or 30 and 35? And then how does that correspond with that 12,000 or 22,000 bonus incentive? So if we can put some sort of monetary commitment to the difference between a BTU. Easy for me to say, hard for me to understand.
Yes, and also other campuses, other school districts that have stopped and how, what's their experience are and slash are districts that have continued with Synergistics. And how have they plateaued? Did it go up? Did it go down? How have they been with that?
Yeah, and I'm still looking in the contract, and you know, I'm challenged visually. But I still don't see anything that says we can hire their employees. I see in the summary page that it allows us to do that moving forward. So 33 months from now, we have an opportunity to, if we choose to, but I don't see that in the contract. So, so help me find that. Okay? All right. Any other board? So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further board comment or questions? Public comment? Would you please introduce yourself when you get to the mic and limit your comments to five minutes? Thank you for being here.
I'm Susie Smith. And concerning the Synergistic, when I was here last week and listening to the presentation about it, there were words that were mentioned that were concerning to me. And I am familiar with Agenda 21. Are you all familiar with Agenda 21?
How we handle public comment, is that what you're discussing?
No, no, I'm asking if you're familiar with Agenda 21.
I'm not.
Well, it's, it's an agenda that's a globalist agenda. And there were terms used last week that were trigger terms for me. And I'm concerned about the globalist movement. And it's also called the Green Movement and the Green New Deal and things like that. And I see that as taking away our rights as a community and as citizens of a community. As you as a school board, that losing our independence as a community and just being an extension of somebody out there somewhere. And so that, that is one of the things that's concerning to me about Synergistic. And it just, I understand they've done lots of research, but knowing how our... And it, it just, I understand they've done lots of research, but knowing how our weather is here and how changeable it is, you know, trying to even set a thermostat to fit everybody for all time, you know, from somewhere out there. It, it just, it's just very concerning to me. So, I hope that you all will, if you're not familiar with Agenda 21, that you'll look into that and educate yourselves on it from the perspective of the globalist agenda. And so that we don't lose any more of our sovereignty for San Angelo.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We appreciate those comments. Anyone else wishing to make comments? If not, I'll call our motion. Do we have all in favor? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes, we don't need to vote. Thank you.
Just as a note, I do think Synergistics is based out of Dallas, just for our community to be aware of where they're based out of.
Right.
Doesn't change anything, but just, I think they're a Texas company.
Yeah, the motion is to table the...
But just as a clarification.
Correct. I thought if we made a motion and a second, we needed to have a vote. So, we, the vote is that we're tabling, but it's still a motion. And so, and a second, so let's, I'll call the vote. So, all in favor of our motion to table our decision, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll go to item 10 to consider our bills, accounts, and financial statements upfront. I'll let everybody know that this is both for August and September of 2019. Do we have a motion to approve?
I will put a motion to approve our bills and financial statements for August and September of 2019. But I will let Bill read the spiel about where you can find all of that information.
So, we have a motion from...
I'll second that.
Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Dindell. Do we have any comments or questions from our board team?
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Kingman for covering for me last, last week.
Okay. So, anybody having any questions concerning our bills, accounts, and financial statements can refer to our website. I think we have pretty much an open checkbook. Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Item 11 is consider the financial integrity rating for San Angelo Independent School District. This is commonly referred to as the first accountability rating, and I'll let Dr. Bright cover that for us.
Well, thank you again. And as, as you see, this, this is an annual event. Seventeen years in a row, we've received the highest rating possible on the financial accountability rating system. It's very similar to the academic, except it's quite not, quite, not as punitive as the academic side, and it's much easier to follow. Over the years, this has transformed. It used to have 22 indicators, and in one year, maybe 24. I notice now they're down to 15, and it's going to do some major revisions next cycle as well. But on the 15 indicators, I think the first four or five, if you fell, if you miss one of those, it's an automatic F, no matter how well you do on the rest of it. So, we passed all those indicators, and in fact, we made a perfect score on the, on the other group of indicators. So, we're very proud of that. It's, you know, almost 90% of the districts in the state get the A. And so, it's an expectation for us, and of course, we're proud of it. It's not a given. So, don't ever, don't ever get too comfortable and settle because there, there are some efforts behind the scenes, and we have a lot of great people back there that, that make sure this happens. So, I'd say congratulations to the board because you kind of set the expectations for us, and we tried to deliver. So, once again, this is really an award for you, Financial Integrity Rating System. You, you earned an A for 17th year in a row. So, congratulations.
Thanks, Dr. Bright. Any other questions or comments concerning the financial integrity rating for San Angelo Independent School District?
I, I just want to say, to compliment our admin, this is, I know Dr. Bright's humble about this, but this 17 years in a row is, is still a big deal to me. And I appreciate all that are, that we do to make this work, just like I do when we get a, a clean audit. This is, this is, this doesn't just happen. So, we appreciate you and appreciate all the work.
Yeah, I know, Dr. Bright, like, I mean, we got an A, but we also, this year, I think, got 100. So, I mean, I think you did a good job, and so you should be applauded for your work and your team's work.
So, do we have a motion to approve? Okay. It's just a report. Consider RFQ 19-03. This is for repairs to Central Tennis Court. Mr. Henry.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight, I have RFQ 19-03, Central Tennis Court refinishing. During the May storm, the tennis courts at Central High School were damaged when storm debris blew across the court. This included, or a large portion of the roof, along with a skylight that was blown off of the roof of the gym. This caused several large gouges in the playing surface. Initially, we looked at having the courts patched. It was determined that patching would leave an appearance of the courts that was not to the standard set by the district. We brought this to the attention of our insurance company and received approval to resurface the four courts that were damaged. We put out a RFQ on bid board, on buy board for this, and we sent it to 12 vendors and received two responses. Hellis Construction had the lowest price and received the highest score. The administration recommends contracting with Hellis Construction for the resurfacing of four tennis courts at Central High School. Do y'all have any questions over that?
When were they be able to start doing that, Jason? Did they say, or?
The last time I talked to them, they said this is more of a slow time for them. And what we're shooting for is to have it done before spring tennis starts.
Okay. So, it, and it's not going to take long. I mean, it's not, nothing major like we've done before.
No, weather, weather permitting for what they're going to be doing, it should take about three or four days.
And they're wrapping up their fall season right now. I believe they just won area championship this last weekend. So, they're getting close to the end of the fall season. So, there'll be a window of opportunity in there.
Yeah, timing's good. Insurance is paying for the cost. You know, we just, as a board, we need to act so they can get to work. Any other comments or questions? Thanks, Jason. Do we have a motion to, to approve the administration's recommendation for contracting Hellis Construction for resurfacing a tennis court?
Do a motion to approve Hellis Construction for the resurfacing of four tennis courts at Central High School. Second?
So, we have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further questions or comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is announcements. We do have a financing pre-agenda board workshop November the 11th, 2019. Our regular board meeting is November 18th of 2019. We are going to go into executive session to discuss personnel. We're able to do that under the, in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551, subchapters D and E, including but not limited to a number of areas, but our particular area is 551074, which is Personnel Matters. So, we're going to go into closed session, and then we'll be back. Thanks, everyone. We're back in regular session, and we are returning from our closed session. We didn't take any official board action while we were there, and certainly didn't take any votes. And I don't think we have any further board business, so here, no objection. We'll stand adjourned.